Good evening. I'd just like to have a minute to welcome everyone. Thank you for coming to the city. This is a really exciting time for us to be able to join together here in this office with this Fire Protection Survey throughout the nation. That's what we're really going to record. We're certainly grateful that everybody's here to join us today. So I'd like to introduce our mayor, Mayor Robert Burns, Mayor of Monroe.
Well, today's a very special evening, but before we get started, there'll be the fourth council. I'd like to call today's meeting Monroe City Council Special Evening Fire Protection Rating Survey Results Report. What a momentous occasion. I can't wait for all of you to hear this great news. I won't spoil it, but man is a city. Be sure of our blessed. Be sure of our blessed. So I hope you guys enjoy this evening and this news. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite our partner, Robert Chapman, Chapman Zaid Burns. Come up and offer him a question.
That's right. Lord, thank you that they came to us and we've come together in this occasion, Lord, that our heart is such a grateful for, that they respond readily, ready, willing, to go into harm's way to protect us, Lord. Bless his food, bless his faith in this new generation, Lord. And I thank you for the dark rating.
Thank you, Zaid. Will you please stand at your own place for me?
I pray that Jesus do the fire in the United States of America and to the world which stands one nation under God and invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Well, again, again, I definitely thank you for being here. It's just a couple of housekeeping, housekeeping, housekeeping that needs first, so I don't want to go without our exits, especially since our state fire marshal was with us this evening. Our exits to this facility are basically in each corner of the bay. Um, we do have a restroom right here to your back, right against the wall there. Anything you need, want to hear the city, please let us know. If you want to take a tour through the station, if you want to hear the circuit, we'd love for you to do that as well. We have a lot of various special people here this evening, and it's really, really hard to start naming people off. Everyone here today is special. So thank you all for being here. Thank you to our city council for being here and their families who wanted to join us. We appreciate what you all do, do every day. So I'm not going to talk a lot. I'm just going to go ahead and introduce our, our, our guests this evening. As, as Mayor mentioned, we're here to, we're here to do the results of our recent Fire Protection Survey, uh, the results of that survey. So this time I might introduce State Fire Marshal, Mr. Brian Taylor, to come and hear his remarks and then go and introduce some of his staff. I, I did want to take a minute. I said I often introduce special people, those are all special. But I, I do want to introduce just a couple. There are some of our citizen volunteers. Uh, we have two members of our firefighter relief front board that are here this evening. Uh, Mr. Todd Price is here. There he is back here in the back. Todd serves as the Chair of our firefighter relief front board. Certainly does a great job. I really appreciate him. And also Mr. Brent Collins, who's the Vice Chair of our relief front board. And his wife, April, wants us to see him. So thank you for being here. Brent's also in the insurance business. Uh, this, um, this topic's pretty dear here to him as well. Also, uh, Mr. Chip Portwell is on our public safety committee, is with us this evening. We appreciate what you do. Appreciate what, what each one of you do and serving the city of this community. So again, certainly an honor to, uh, introduce, uh, Chief Brian Taylor, who is a state fire marshal for the, for North Carolina. I've known Chief Taylor for a number of years and, uh, he's doing a great job. We appreciate him. We appreciate what he does with the State Fire Marshal's Office. So I'm turning it over to him.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. And what an exciting day it is for the city of Monroe. Uh, it was my pleasure to be here today to provide this announcement. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the public fire protection class. Uh, and of course, Chief Fowler, Chief Fowler, as he says, that he did way back. I started my career, my post of my career in Hightower, I was a major in the career for that fire department. He and I teamed at UNC Charlotte together and the vibrational matrix could develop a special bond there. And of course, I see so many other places that used to burn houses, went here, even UNC many years ago. So a lot of history here, our friends here, and it's great to all of us members of Monroe. But, uh, North Carolina's been a little unique over the years, uh, in the past. ISO ratings were not alone to really benefit the citizens and the communities throughout North Carolina. And North Carolina legislature along with Jim Harman approached and, and really looked at this as a whole community. North Carolina is the only state fire marshal's office that does their own regulations, which benefits, of course, the citizens of North Carolina and the business owners of North Carolina. So we are very fortunate and I love when we're across the state or across this country and talking about what we do here in North Carolina, because we are leaders in many ways, just like the Fire Department is a leader here in this state. And with Chief Fowler, who, well, he has gone across the state and across the south, they've served on municipal national boards. But, uh, we can, this is our staff. We have an incredible team and I would like to ask our entire, this is fortunately, uh, this is their training. So they've come together quarterly and they happen to do that here in Monroe. If our staff had seen this, I think most of us have seen this picture earlier. So I'd like to see this out for a brother. So, uh, I'd like to get these out. Thank you. Before this position, what I can do mention from the past structure is that we're behind. We're 20 years behind, going back to our highest level of the place. They were 20 years behind in inspections. And, uh, he approached the legislature, says, we need three more photos. Uh, and of course, the staff basically educated him on that. He said, we need three more photos to catch up our inspections. And I can tell you within, we're almost at the same year mark with the initial staff and the work that they did. We are now inspecting our, it's air 45 years, which benefits the taxpayers of North Carolina. So thank you. So what we are here for, I can tell you, Chief, I have been riled two or three times. But I'm straight laced and I keep doing, I can't keep straight faced. But of course, written between lines, we all know what we're here for today. And this accomplishment takes so much work, not only by the fire department, the fire chief, the administration, the men and women of the Fire Department, the local police, the, from its second high groups, fire, fire planning, uh, there's the apparatus checks, pump, uh, pump maintenance, they're all going on and on. But also it takes, um, renowned officers, county folks are here, you know, because it's just not always all from the, the fire department. It's also partnerships with the 911. And also the water, the toilets, uh, ways and parts into this decision. And this partnership we kept has come to this way to the day. Monroe was a class two. I believe when you took over as a chief, we were a class six. And how many years ago did we have? 25 years ago. So it is my honor, privilege to today announce, Chief, if you'll come on up, announce that you are a class one, major fire department, one of 30 in the state of North Carolina. Congratulations, Chief. While Varnon, if you'd like to, I always like to have the inspector actually mid-rating, to talk about the process and what the fire department has achieved. But I would like to select a few comments. It's not only there's, uh, there's a P max to the current, you know, the city of Monroe. There's a current department in North Carolina, 12 other departments. There's only 2% of patients while they have achieved a class one. Not only that, this department has also achieved accreditation. So as I told the chief, I says, what else can you accomplish as fire chief in, in a role? So he has done a fantastic job. The city of Monroe ought to be very thankful for, for his leadership. And now with, uh, City Mayor Watson, and his role, he is an advocate for first responders. Uh, I worked with him in the county and of course now the city. And he'll be very fortunate with the folks that you have. Varnon, would you kind of talk about your experience in inspection?
Thank you. Well, it's pretty much a meeting we got live. And, uh, my relationship with Ron goes back several years. When we served when I was, before I came over to State Fire Marshal, uh, I was a fire chief in Gilford, Dade. And Ron and I started on, uh, this P law board together. He went through the fire chiefs association. I went through the fire association, started the second time. Ron and I have been a big, I feel like good friends for a long, long time. And when I got this job and started working, uh, this wasn't one area that I really worked. But, uh, Jeremy Hunt actually works in U.C. And we started a new review program a few years ago. Ron wanted us to review his grade from last time to see how they can maintain or obtain this class one. So I had to go, it was because Jerry and I come down here to, to do this work and show them where the short fault was. Then to get them there. And Ron and his staff have worked very hard, along with the water department, because I was one of your, I won't say weak points. It wasn't the water was weak. It was just some of the record keeping, the things that you have to do. And they got a very good job of getting here. And it was really, I hate to say it, but I would not really want to do this rating, but it's Jerry's family. Of course, Jerry got cut of it when he was supposed to be here. And so instead of rescinding us, I do it. And I, and I really have a pleasure of working with Ron and his staff. But I don't think, I'd like to just explain a few things that goes into the way we speak. If we look at four main things, and, and, uh, Ron touched on it, it's like if we look at the community cases, that's 10% of the grade. And we go into the community cases center and see how they handle calls, how they process calls, and their equipment they have to do with. And they've done a very good job. The second thing we have is the fire department. We look at their training. We look at their equipment. We look at how they respond. Uh, we look at their workers that they keep there. And then we look at the water, because fire chief is 10% of the grade. Water's 40% of the grade. And the water department has done a fantastic job with the system. And we look at how much water they have available. We look at the risk for the community. How many, what kind of order do they need for the buildings and stuff they have here in the event of a fire? And the system here is above that. And, uh, then we look at, and that's 40% of the grade. And then we look at your community risk. And this department is big on community involvement, educating the community on fire risks and things like that. And all that put together could have been an S U D class and, and be able to get this class one. And the trick is out is to continue maintaining that, you know? And, uh, I feel sure Ron and his staff, they've done a great job. And it was a pleasure working with this entire, uh, Monroe Fire Department and the whole city far as ever. So, uh, I commend you, congratulate the department, Ron, his staff, the city council for supporting me. Uh, and supporting the fire department and, and accomplishing this goal. Thank you.
There's actual, uh, the inspection sheets. You give the ones and of course the, the American. I'll give it back.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Chief. Those are.
Well, certainly I want to say thank you to the Chief Taylor and Mr. Ward for coming this evening and making this presentation. Thank you all of the State Fire Marshal staff for being here. This is certainly a, a great, uh, honor for all of us, uh, not, not just the fire department, but for the entire city, for, for our community. Um, as, as I stated, this is, this is more than just the fire department rating. It also looks at our communications system. I, I would like to recognize Mr. Nicky Calvert-Cup. He was the director of the 911 center, uh, CCOM as we call it. Thank you to you and your staff for all y'all did. Y'all all, y'all all that first, first step in, in any emergency that happens. So thank you for being here. Thank you for what you and your group did. Um, also our water resources department, uh, Scott Farrar, his team are here with us this evening. And I want to say something about that. Um, Chief Taylor, right, when I mentioned when we had our last rating in 2019, uh, one of the things that would have, that we did have in place then was the high quality modeling system for our water system. And that's something that Scott and his team put in place. And that has been a tremendous help in, in obtaining this, this classification. So Scott, thank you to you and, and your team for all you all did. Again, for putting that, the high quality modeling system in place. We, uh, we appreciate that. Um, I know we've got, hey, man, Rick's here with you. Um, Scott, a couple over here on the other side. So thank you, thank you to you guys for what you do. Because again, we couldn't, we couldn't have done this without y'all's help. Really without the mission of the high quality modeling system. So thank you for that. Um, City Council, thank you for what another big thing that we've done since the last rating in 2019. From the fire department perspective, once we opened Station 6, that was also a big factor in this, in this rating improvement. Um, I really believe that the combination of the high quality modeling system and the opening of Station 6 were the, the two big factors in putting this over that, over that threshold to make it to the top. So thank you, thank you, thank you to council for the support in, um, in opening that fire station. Again, this is, you know, this, this is a community-wide achievement. Um, so this is, this is the best rating we can get. And we're certainly proud of that. It doesn't mean that we're the best we can be. We'll continue to, continue to strive to, to be better and improve. Um, as, as each gentleman mentioned, you know, the whole ISO rating system kind of, kind of compares what, what resources you have versus the base you have in your community. So as the city continues to grow, we'll have to continue to grow with that. And I, and I feel certainly we'll do that. As I certainly are going to continue to get better. I want to give you just a little bit of history of getting here from the ISO rating perspective. When, when I started to work here, and I think we've already pretty much identified that I'm an old guy, you know, so I've been here a while. But anyway, when I started here in 83, we were a class six. And I went back and looked at some old records. Monroe in 1976, they were rated by, um, ISO Insurance Services Office. And in their report, it said that Monroe maintained their class six. So prior to 76, they were a class six. The rating in 1976, they maintained a class six. So fast forward to that to, to 1995, so that was during our public safety era. Chief Gilmore was, uh, was the chief then. And, uh, we had a, we had an ISO inspection in 1995. Um, Chief Gilmore kind of asked me with coordinating that, that inspection. So we did make an improvement in 95 from a class six to a class five. Then again, in 2006, and as Chief Taylor mentioned, the Department of Insurance took over the inspection rating program, I believe in 2000, 2001. So 2006, our next, uh, our next inspection. And we had separated from one safety that I separate fire release in, so 2006 during that, um, rating, we went from a class five to a class three. And then our last inspection in 2019, we were fortunate enough to go from a class six to a class two. So I guess there's something, lots of people continue, we were able to go to the class one this time. So again, thank you, everybody. I should say we want to thank too the men and women of, uh, of our department, of the fire department. There's a, a lot of work that goes into this. And, and I'm just, you know, the days preparing for this survey is throughout the years. There's a lot that goes into this. So thank you to all the men and women of, of the fire department for all they do every day. We got two of our past assistant chiefs here, Chief Eddie Gordon, Chief Chris Griffin. You guys are certainly a part of that over the years. So thank you for what you did for giving your witness this evening. So at this time, I would like to introduce our, recognize our mayor. Mayor, is there anything you would like to, anything you would like to share, sir?
Hello again. Okay. I'm actually going to be passing around the mic, um, to the city council. And I just want to hear some of the words, um, and the women to speak. Councilman McAllister.
Good evening. Good evening to everybody. This is truly a celebration. Um, to go from a class six to a class one in such a relatively short time is, is truly, uh, momentous and almost memorable. And everybody who's in the fire department, would you stand up just so that we can give you all a round of applause? And I would like to, uh, also thank all my council members. We all put in a lot of, a lot of hours, but it is nothing like what these men and women do responding to emergencies 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we thank you. We thank you from, from the bottom of our hearts.
Councilman McGee.
Good evening. Um, Chief Fowler asked me, told me about tonight. He said, "Councilman McGee, we're going to have a great, uh, we're going to have a survey results, uh, run by council of the people." This is more than a big thing for this amazing city of North Carolina. We support our fire department. So I really appreciate it. And I, uh, I put together a few words to try to put in the context of how I feel about the great accomplishment that our fire department has made tonight. This is a great pride that I stand for today to acknowledge the outstanding results from the recent Fire Protection Survey. For our senior one of the fire department under the leadership of Chief Ron Fowler, has exemplified, has exemplified March receiving a class A rating. This accomplishment is a testament to the, to the determination of our work and the commitment. Our fire department personnel has personified. And, you know, I'm just going to thank you. And so the congratulations to the city of North Carolina Fire Department for your remarkable achievement. Thank you.
All right. May I introduce her? Councilman Thompson.
Well, it's a privilege to be here this evening, and this is just outstanding. Um, it has a special, special meaning for me too, having, uh, as parents and first responders and all personal officers and, um, the sacrifice that, um, we know they make and that all of you make 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 300 days a week here. And to, who, to have achieved this tremendous accomplishment is just truly a testament to your dedication. Also to our fine staff, Chief Fowler and his staff, our, uh, my colleagues on the city council. It's a privilege to be here. I say it often, anytime I get a chance to speak, it's just a privilege to serve. And I'm so glad to be a part of this organization. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It is absolute honor to be able to share this experience with you. It's absolutely incredible, amazing, phenomenal. When you think of class one, one of 30, let's give him another year. This is a very proud moment for the entire Fortified Department. And I want to say on a personal note, I've had occasion go to five or six fires and watch these amazing firemen work. They're dedicated, they're focused, they're compassionate, they're efficient, and they're professional. So I have a first hand view. And I am so proud to be a part of it. Congratulations Ron and the whole fire department. And one last thing, I got a chance to pick something on my butt for this tonight. Thank you, Captain Maston, for allowing me to get in this way. Thank you.
Good evening. It's truly an honor to be here. Uh, this really is a special moment. And I just wanted to reflect back on one special warning that I had, uh, with Chief Fowler and when we opened up Station 6. And we know that that was a service gap that was identified, uh, by our ISO team in the last visit. We know that that area out there, uh, Rocky River and beyond, um, some of the response times were over 10 minutes prior to opening up Station 6. And when we opened up Station 6, we cut that to five minutes or less, uh, which was a huge improvement. I, I know, I will forget that morning, uh, Chief Fowler was out there at 6:00 AM. Uh, we heard some roosters and some cows and quite a lot of, uh, employees was out there that earlier. Um, but Chief Fowler got in, in the truck himself and said, "CCOM, uh, Station 6, Engine 6 is efficiently in service." Um, I know that made a huge difference. I want to thank our council for supporting that and supporting those additional 12 firefighters. Um, because we, we can't have a station if it's not properly staffed. Um, again, I cannot underscore the huge accomplishment. This is, this is truly a huge moment for our city. Class one, the absolute best you can get. Um, I thank the men and women of our fire department. You make it happen every single day. We certainly appreciate you and all of your families for being here. Thank you. Well, everyone has taken all of the accolades that have been passed to the fire department. I want to say this. This fire department makes it look easy as a council. I'm, I'm proud to be associated with you. But I want to say this. This is just something to hang on to. It's very important, but this is a reflection of what we are. We're a first-class fire department. We're a first-class fire department. We're a first-class city. So as hard as your words, we get it. We reflect that every single day. And if we've never gotten it, it doesn't change the plan. We have a great fire department. So proud for listening.
Now, I'm going to read you guys the fire department business in the vision. The mission of Monroe Fire Department is to protect the quality of life and property in our community through a personal commitment and all services provided. Monroe, and now here's the vision. Monroe Fire Department's 2024 vision is to continue to fulfill our personal and organizational commitment to protect life and property in the state of Monroe while living our core values in all that we do. This vision will only become a reality by dedicating ourselves to service, embracing history, living for our future, and pursuing excellence in all that we do. It is truly an honor to serve as the mayor of Monroe when you have individuals so dedicated to service like every single one of you. As Mayor Rodent just said, our job is the easiest part.
easiest part. The dedication and the sacrifice that every single one of you make as a part of this department is the hard part. And we are grateful for you. It's just that our community also gets the benefit from that part of it. So tonight, we're here to celebrate you. And I want to, and it's so easy to do, is it not, to give a round of applause to your chief, who has so selfishly, 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 served this community for so long. His character is easy to recognize. His dedication and hard work is something that we should all strive for in this city. And it's amazing how that permeates through everyone that serves underneath him. Because when you serve underneath Chief Fowler, you're actually a part of family. And that's how he treats you. And so I want to say that to you. Thank you for all that you've done for this community, for your hard work and dedication. And everyone in this entire city is grateful for you and what you've done. Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Fowler.
I want to call you chief. God bless you and your wife too, because we know that she's working on your life. But that said, I'd like to recognize City Manager Watson, a few extra remarks, and then we will adjourn the meeting and then we will leave.
So thank you, Mayor. Um, as Councilmember Dotson said just a minute ago, all of the the important things have already been said, how we got here, what went into this process. Uh, but I will tell you, my first day on the job with the city of Monroe are memorable for two reasons. One, as soon as I met the staff and went to my office, I turned around and there stood the Energy Services Director, who was bringing a very important item that needed attention. And right behind me on was Chief Fowler. And Chief Fowler said, and, and, and I will tell you, as a, as a city manager, when, when the fire chief walks in the office and he says, hey, yeah, I need it. That means one or two things. Number one, it definitely means I need something from you. And it's probably going to cost money. It all costs money. But what Chief Fowler wanted to tell me that day is he wanted to talk about this ISO inspection process. And we talked at length and he knows my background and he knows the experience I have uh, with these inspections. And what he wanted to share was that while we have, have a wonderful water resources department, our water system had never been tested to the level to actually certify it for this process. And you just heard that over forty percent of the school is related to water. We can buy nice shiny one point two million dollar fire trucks. One point eight. See, he always pants, but he thinks I don't know that. He, he, yeah, he tells me. But this becomes useless if it doesn't have water. So immediately we got on the phone, started talking with Scott Clark, Amy Cook, and Trisa. And folks, you just don't know what a difference you made. And we really appreciate, this, this exemplifies for everybody here that the city of Monroe staff is telling. Nothing happens in life, we all have to work together and everything that, that, that happens, we all have to support each other. So thank you so much for going through that extra effort to get our system involved. But what that really means is, you know, that our system is sustainable enough that if we had a major fire event on one side of town, that, that we have enough water on the other side of town and, and plenty to meet all the needs and the pressure states we're exposed to. And we can supply everything that fire department needs to, to fight those problems and meet those needs. And now it's an improvement for a fact. And that's huge. The other thing I want to just take a minute is we have a table full of folks out here for your county. We have emergency management folks, we have emergency communications folks, we have our county fire marshal, and we have a retired fire marshal here. He must have screwed it up a lot. But the one thing that, you know, Monroe is not alone to itself. And within Monroe's ranks and the fire department, there are several fire chiefs or volunteer fire departments throughout the county. And there are a lot of volunteer firefighters that have worked in Monroe and volunteer where they live out in the county to make sure that everybody stays safe. They bring the training that they received here back home and they put it to use. So about four years ago, we did the tanker task force. So that, when I say tanker task force, that may not mean a lot to, to some folks, but if you live out in the county where they don't have a water system that they can rely on, where do they get their water? Out of a big tanker truck. And they, and, and when a big fire is going, rolling, it requires several fire departments to come in with tanker trucks to keep that water flowing. And in the past, though all of the, in the volunteer fire departments individually had to be tested and rated. So four years ago, the tanker task force, which was every tanker in the county, got tested at the same time for its, how fast it could haul water, dump water, return, get more water. And the fire marshal's office said it was like watching NASCAR and then, and we were standing on dead road. They were out there clocking. Who was out there supporting all of those county volunteer fire departments that day, making sure that that water was getting pumped into those tankers as quick as it could get pumped so that they could return and dump that water and get certified under the fire department? Monroe Fire Department was out there supporting the county volunteer fire departments, making sure that water was getting pumped. And as a result, that tanker task force got certified. And as a result of that, fire departments across this county's ISO rating improved. So as a result of that, government, fire department cooperation, it benefited everybody. And that's what it was all about. That is the spirit of fire service in this county. And we appreciate you all so much. Thank you so much, Chief Fowler, for all that you do. And I will remember that you kept the budget. So just, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and mark, I know where I got some extra money, I could put some of what else next time. Just take it with you, just take it with you. So thank you so much for all that you do. We appreciate you.
City Council, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey, they might have a key from, so I.
Tell me, circle off a plank, right? All right. Um, at this point, uh, we are going to entertain the emotion from our city council to adjourn this meeting. A motion in a second? What was the paper?
Yeah.
Okay, just for bridge. Okay, um, again, I would like to thank everyone who's coming tonight. God bless each and every one of you. God bless this great city. Chief, who's saying the prayer?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to, to everyone for all this, for all this time, time. Um, again, this, this isn't, this isn't a one-person thing. It's not a one department thing. It's a, it's a team effort. Uh, we, so thanks to all of them. Scott, do you think you'd like to, anything you'd like to add? Certainly, give you an opportunity to do that.
Most importantly, uh, thank you for the partnership. We have a quarterly meeting between water resources and fire. And uh, it really is a partnership for us to get and get things done in the conference. A bomb I got two years ago up here with Monroe, Chief Fowler, bought me a lunch and I was personally, I was your age, probably, and a lot of the water issues that you were, you know, to our editor of the conference, Matt was the water. And so also, we're in, helped fund the Georgia Gulf as well. So um, thank you for that as well. But most importantly, I want to thank my staff, Rich, Riser Engineering Manager, Amy Cook, General Manager of Operations, Chuck, Derek back here in Cole. Uh, we started working with pressure monitoring workers and doing a lot of flow tests and everything. And we were, these guys conducted a lot of fire flow tests. I can't even tell you how many, but they were doing a lot. We were going back with numbers, worked with engineering consultant department as well, and had some of you guys as well. So I'm good with that. I'm a professional.
I mean, he's got, and certainly, again, we appreciate you and your staff. Chuck, I'm sorry, Mr. Earl. We appreciate that. Appreciate that partnership. So thank you all, thank you again to the staff in the fire department, um, everyone who's here this evening. Thank you to our families who support us every day. Thank you to my family who's with us here this evening. I'll take a little bit of a personal, briefly share. Let's have a life and our daughters, Christie, and our daughter Laura, and the chef names all. We talked about the partnership. This is kind of an extended partnership here. But anyways, we appreciate, we appreciate that. Our daughter Sarah, and then if you're here actually, you see pictures of my, of my grandson. So he's here with us tonight too. So we're certain, happy about that. But again, thank you all for being here. Um, I want to ask a question. There's a couple of quick things. One, I apologize for the party tonight. Um, the board of elections is actually doing a training over in the community room. So trying to create a little bit of a partnership happening, but thank you for working through that. Also, DOT is going to be paying me out here shortly, which is certainly a good thing, because I know it certainly means it. But when you leave here, uh, there may be some, that may already be started. So if there are, we'll be out there helping you get out. And of course, the OZ will be helping direct that out as well. Let me, uh, let me ask a question and, and we'll have dinner. God, we thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. And thank you for, for everyone who's standing here this evening. Just thank you for this panel we shared together for this fellowship. God, we thank you for this good results over here. We, we thank you for the, the men and women of the fire department, what they do every day. And God just thank you for keeping them safe, pray you continue to do that. Thank you for their families, loved ones, and all that they do in supporting them while they're, we thank you for our water resources department and their staff, what they've done, for our communications folks and the telecommunicators, what they do every day. Just thank you for each of you. We, uh, thank you for the state fire marshal office staff, what they do over Austin State. Just thank you again for everyone who's here this evening. Thank you for this food. Yes, we bless them. Just help us serve them as we can. In Jesus' name, our beloved baby. So we're gonna have, uh, we're actually having steak tonight, uh, actually from later down. Uh, so I said, you know, if there's ever been a time that we could justify to have steak, this would be, this would be it. I think. So incidentally, someone asked me earlier, someone asked me earlier, they said, what are you going to do again there? And I reported something else, something a little more. I said, well, I don't know. I just step out the back door and see what happens. I'm like, well, again, Chief Taylor and your staff, thank you guys for being here this evening. Please, help your staff with a little bit and stay in, enjoying the fellowship. Thank you, yes, Rob, for yes, big to your staff, John and Andrew, you guys, thank for what you do every day. Rod, my uncle, and my relatives here, thank you for being here. Somebody especially, thank you all.